I also thank you, Lord, for James and for his leadership as mayor. And I ask for your hand upon him as he transitions into a new path in his life. And thank him, Lord, for all that he has done and the diligence that he has had for the city. I also ask for your hand upon Sue coming in as the new mayor-elect. And your heavenly Father, I ask that you would lay your hand upon her and that you would guide her in your wisdom, and that you would give her your heart for the city of Perry, and that you would help the council and the mayor and all those involved, Lord Jesus, to be able to work together and to be able to value one another as they work together for the city of Perry. I put this meeting in your hands, Lord, and ask for your guidance and your words as the agenda items are discussed and are gone over, Lord, that your will will be done and that we will all be united together, Lord, in our common love. We thank you, we love you, Lord, and we ask all of us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you for your service. The time is now seven o'clock, and I will call order this regular meeting of the Perry City Council for Thursday, November 19th. Would everyone please rise? And would you join me in saying, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You all may proceed then. Devin, would you please call the roll?
Genevieve Catrell?
Here.
Craig Elliott? Mindy Galbely?
Here.
Adam Grass?
Here.
Christopher Powell?
Here.
Terry Wood?
Here.
Mayor Dan Chigula?
Here.
All on the countercourt except council member Craig Elliott.
I find that the court is present. We may conduct business. Our first item, I guess we should have flipped these around, but our first item is oaths of office for elected officials. So we have with us here tonight our council members elect and re-elected and our mayor-elect. Would the clerk please swear the council members-elect here?
If I could, I have. Sue Hammond?
Council members? Are you going to do Sue first? You can't do Sue first.
Larry Lambert? Bob Porter?
Do you want me?
I don't know.
I was hoping you should buy the flag if possible. Can we do this?
Well, I'll just hang out here.
I'm sorry, Mindy. Mindy, you're just supposed to be here, right? If I'd have said my name, I'd have been.
Get right. I'm not ready to go and block mail.
Okay. Are we ready? One hand and repeat after me, please, Sue. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. That Constitution of the state of Michigan, the charter and ordinances of the city of Perry, and that I will faithfully perform the duties as elected. Council, please say. Council members? Mayor? According to the best of my ability, so help me God. And if you would like.
You done?
Yeah. All have to sign this, and we don't have to do it now.
Congratulations, everybody. I have a few words I'd like to share with the new office of mayor. Over my time, I've been a great academic student of history, and I've always admired the examples set for our country by the founders and some of the examples they set. One of the most significant ones that we thought about in our history classes as we're growing up is the example that George Washington set when he said two terms is enough for any man. And he did something unprecedented at the time. He chose to go home, saving us a nation where you believe that someone could have a right to be the president for life. But other founders, I have found, have done other things very important. And I have been a greater admirer of our second president, John Adams. The example, the precedent he set for us was after going through a hostile election, as hostile as anything we've seen today, and losing decisively to his opposition, John Adams gave us the precedent of losing an election and going home, a peaceful transition of power. And I think that must have been a much harder choice to make than the choice that Washington made when he chose his own time and left. And so I've been reading history a little bit, and I was looking over John Adams' letters to his wife, Abigail, letters related to when he became president. In 1797, when he was sworn in, General Washington attended his inauguration. And John Adams wrote this to his wife, and it certainly struck me. He wrote, "It seemed to me he enjoyed, it seemed to me he enjoyed a triumph over me. Me thought I heard him think, 'I, I am fairly out and you are fairly in. See which of us will be the happier.'" John Adams went on to write in his letter and talk about what Washington said to him after he, after he had gone through the ceremony and he'd been inaugurated. Washington came to Adams and said, as I want to say to you, "Congratulations. I wish your administration might be happy, successful, and honorable. And this, I'll add, you will be in my sincere prayers, Sue. And I want to say, the Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace." Congratulations, Mayor. Our next item on the agenda is approval of that agenda. Clerk and I have prepared the agenda. And to the best of our knowledge, it can involve all matters of business that may come, need to come before council for your action tonight. I submit it to you for your approval or your amendment.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second. Moved by Grass, seconded by Powell, let the agenda be adopted as printed. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will take us to reading and approval of the minutes. Devin, would you please read the minutes of the November 5th regular city council meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the November 5th, 2020, regular meeting.
Second.
Moved by Wood, seconded by Grass, that we suspend the rule, waive the reading, and approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2020, regular council meeting as presented. Do council members have any objection to the suspension of the rules? Hearing none. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That will take us to pre-approved reports and presentations. We have, have tonight the awards of our Perry Pride winners. With this whole COVID crisis, everything went kind of crazy on us, and we lost, we lost a lot of opportunities to recognize citizens here in Perry who do a wonderful job of taking care of their homes and really make our community a wonderful place to see and to come to and to live. And last year, having missed, missed two of those opportunities, I was unwilling to leave office, leaving blank slots on there. And so at the end of October, I took the time with my wife to go out and pick winners in the five sections of the city that had not had a chance to be considered for the wonderful job that they do taking care of their home. And our sponsor, Darling's Hardware, graciously agreed to maintain their sponsorship and fulfill five months' worth of awards all in one month. That has my attitude for that. So we have some of our winners with us here tonight to recognize, and I have some honorable mentions. Our first winner is Vivian Keeney of 102 East Willow Street. Is Vivian with us tonight?
Four of May.
So we will reach out to Vivian and ask that her award be forwarded to her. For that same section of the city, we have some honorable mentions, some additional beautiful homes for Jane Easton at 319 South Madison Street, Joel and Carol Crane at 119 West First Street, and Brian and Jill Thompson at 437 Williams Street. Our next winner, because we have the city divided up into six sections, is Chris McDivitt of 313 Lincoln Street. Chris, are you here with us tonight? Welcome in. Your home was beautiful. We have for you a plaque. From Darling's Hardware.
Thank you for your beautiful job. Thank you for all your work and how you open up the community.
Amy's coming out.
There you go. I get you walking away.
I was gonna say smile, but I guess I won't do anything.
Our honorable mentions are June Benson at 319 South Madison Street and Dale and Sharon Richard at 307 East Second Street. Our next winner is Charles and Jody Duffield, 317 West Wall Street. Charles and Jody, are they here with us tonight? Well, then I'll, we'll reach out to them from City Hall, and they can come in and pick up their awards. Let me actually pull it out of your bag. Our honorable mentions are James and Deanna Shaw, Robert and Sonia DeBue, and Kathy Edwards. Our next winners from our Perry Lakes subdivision. We put them all by themselves because a whole brand-new subdivision certainly has certain advantages. But there are several families there that do a wonderful job. And we would like to recognize as our winners Tom and Becky Sanford, 366 Clearwater Drive. Are Tom and Becky with us tonight? We'll reach out to Tom and Becky, and they can come up to City Hall and receive their award, the beautiful work they do. We have two honorable mentions for that section. Karen DeCarlo, 507 North Perry Lake Drive. Kane and Amy Madsen of 514 North Clearwater Drive. Our final winner to recognize tonight is Nolan Kim, 530 North Madison Street. Is Nolan with us tonight? Congratulations.
Your home is wonderful. We can judge it on a variety of things, including the structure and how well-kept up it is, and the yard, flowers, and all those things. And my wife and I were very impressed with your home. Congratulations.
And she does it on her own. She has grandkids and.
So do I!
And they follow it. She still does it on her own.
And we would like to recognize them.
They're gonna have to split the award.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
We have our three honorable mentions. One that we've heard many times before. Gary Galbely, 639 North Watkins Street. Gary's home has always been wonderful for many years. Jeremy and Corinne Louz, 105 East Polly Street. He took a very old historic home and he's done a beautiful job restoring it. And Rashad Bordell and Jessica Kuzdek, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, 640 North Madison Street. We want to recognize and appreciate all of these families around Perry who do a wonderful job in making Perry look like a great community, Lord Jesus. Thank you all very much. All the names have been carved into the plaque, which will be hung down stairs in permanent recognition of these families and all of them.
Mayor, I want to say thank you for doing this. It's a good example of the amount that you care for this community.
Thank you. I, I, I hope that we get past this COVID thing so that council can take this up next year. I typically don't get to do it, and it was a real joy for my wife and I to go around and look at the city for that. Something that you guys have done many times, but I hadn't had the chance to do. So I was happy for the opportunity. Thank you, Mindy. That will move us to the next part of our agenda, public comments. Devin, do we have anybody with us on Zoom?
We do. I don't have anybody currently raising their hand.
If anybody with us on Zoom would like to have public comment, please raise your hand. The clerk will recognize you, and we'll dial into our phones to hear you. Would anybody here present with us tonight like to have public comment? Mayor Evolent, welcome. Our guest, Mayor Evolent from the city of Owasso.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to come and, well, Chris Evolent, 715 West King Street, Owasso, Michigan. And as Mayor Huglott said, I am the mayor of Owasso. I have been so for four years, and I'm now coming into my third term there. And I want to really just congratulate Mayor Huglott and thank him for his many years of loyal service. Anyone who's been on that side of the table knows the daunting task that it can be at times. And one of the things that I've appreciated most of your service is your willingness to reach out proactively to other communities in the area, you know, to understand what's going on in those areas and all of that. You and I have shared many great conversations over the years and, you know, shared our own sort of battle stories. And so that, that relationship has been very appreciated. To our new mayor coming in here. Now, there are five cities in Chiowasht County that have mayors. So you are now informally, as we joke sometimes, you're one of the heads of the five families. And I look forward to getting to know you better and forming that relationship. I myself will be out of office in two years, so you'll have somebody else there. But, and then we have, we're gonna have a new mayor in Duran by the end of the month as well. So I'm here for you. Anything that you may need or any resources or advice that you may need, I'm glad to help in any way I can. So congratulations all to the council members as well on your elections. It's a big job, as you will learn, but you will enjoy it. It comes with its rewards as well. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would anyone else from the public like to address council at this time?
James, is this a good time for me to just say?
You're absolutely welcome.
I sue Hannah, 639 North Main Street. As somebody pointed out to my husband today, the White House. I am very excited about this time coming as mayor. I'm really looking forward to getting to know the staff here and the council members better. I have acquaintance with many of you, but I don't really know you, so I'm looking forward to that. But I wanted just to take a minute and thank James for all that he's done during his term as mayor, or terms, actually, but also for the extra time that he's taken to walk me through the many responsibilities that come with serving as mayor. And he didn't have to do that. He really didn't. It was his idea. He reached out to me, and I really want to thank you, James, for taking all that time to help me with that. It's made me a lot more comfortable with what's coming. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing no other public comments, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, communications. Devin, do we have any communications tonight?
Just two. So while I was getting all the offices ready and terms and such, Judy, my predecessor of being clerk, created this sheet of history. And so I'm just gonna quickly share the information from the election that is always very interesting to me. There was 1,614 registered voters, which is up an additional 100 from the August election. And 1,159 people voted, which it was a 72% turnout, which the highest I've ever seen in the city is 45%. So that was just an extreme amount of difference. Also, I just want to thank Mr. Powell. Thank Genevieve for serving, and you'll be missed. I appreciate you all. And then last correspondence, Mayor. We would like to have an open house for you and invite anyone who would like to, to say their last goodbyes and good lucks to him. You're invited to say goodbye and wish Mayor Huglott good luck in his future ventures. December 1st, Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. to noon at City Hall. We'll have life refreshments. We'll be served. Don't forget your mask. And I also want to recognize, as I looked through his history, I showed four years, 11 months as a council member and eight years as a mayor with a total of 12 years and 11 months of service to the city, and thank you.
Thank you. That will move us to mayor's reports. I don't actually have anything that isn't on the agenda to report on, but I'd be happy to take questions if council has an report. Thank you. We'll move to committee reports. Do council members have any committee reports to deliver tonight? Seeing no committee reports, we'll move to presentation and approval of the bills. Council has had an opportunity to review the bills, and we seek your permission to pay them.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second. Moved by Wood, seconded by Catrell, that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized. Is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Council was very efficient at the last meeting. There are no items of old business. So that'll move us to new business. We have several items on here for you to move forward. This one I'm going to, I'm gonna speak on a little bit, but then I'm gonna invite the mayor-elect to add anything if she would like to add anything. If you feel I've left something out, feel free to add it in. But she and I had a discussion with city treasurer Joanne Delting regarding upcoming retirement plans. And we began talking about how to handle the transition. And so the mayor-elect and I agreed that the way to go was to hire a deputy clerk, deputy treasurer at this time to come in. We're gonna look for somebody with an accounting background to come in and begin training, potentially, to serve in that treasurer post. What we discussed, though the decision will be made later, is following the example of several other cities, including Coruna, and combining the clerk and treasurer post into one and eventually having the city clerk treasurer with a deputy dedicated about to, to the job to learn and prepare themselves for a future opportunity to be the clerk and treasurer. But we don't have to make that final decision now. That will lie with the mayor and the next council. At this time, we decided our recommendation was that we get that new person in here and begin the training process. Give her an opportunity to work with Joanne and learn where all the different details and important things are at. And so at our request, the clerk began working on putting together information regarding the position. Because this is a new position, it takes council approval to create it. We have submitted the proposed salary range and job description to council for your consideration tonight. But we're asking the city council to create this position. Mayor-elect, do you want to add anything?
I think we've covered it all, James, and I, I absolutely agree. I think this is a very good way to approach this.
Thank you. And, and my goal is to have this set up so that the mayor-elect, the new mayor, she takes office, is ready to hit the ground right now. So I'll open the floor up for discussions, questions, motions, whatever council's plan is.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move that the city create a part-time deputy clerk treasurer position, which hours shall not exceed 32 hours per week and is effective immediately.
The board. Moved by Catrell, seconded by Powell, that the city create a part-time deputy clerk treasurer position, which hours shall not exceed 32 hours per week and is effective immediately. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That will move us to our next item of new business, possible adoption of resolution for the EDA grant application. This is the water project that we are working on jointly with the town, Perry Township in order to extend the loop up around Bennett Drive and back down Britton Road, going down Lansing Road and then back on Britton Road. A potential new water tower and also development of the city's new well field that we've acquired. I've been working closely with the mayor-elect on this because this is a ball that I will not be able to carry across the goal line. So we've worked together on this and negotiating with the township. This is the next step in making a grant application. The township has already passed their resolution. The resolution has been run by city council and city, city's attorney, I should say. And we've received legal advice to make sure that the motion will accomplish only what we want, which is to forward the grant application process. Sue, do you want to add anything?
I'd just like to say that the grant that's available is amazing. I, I've never seen, and I've heard Dustin Horvath and James and many people who've gone in on this discussion saying they have never seen a grant like this. With the federal monies and state monies, the city and township have to pay just a little tiny bit. But it has to be approved. It has to be accepted, and it has to be accepted in the timeframe where there's still some money available. So even though if you approve it, it doesn't absolutely mean it's gonna happen. But it would be great if it did, for both the city and the township.
So I'll open the floor up for questions, discussion, and motion.
I move that we accept and approve this resolution for the EDA grant application which requests federal grant funding for the city of Perry to build water tower, city well, and extend water into the township in cooperation with Perry Township.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Galbely, to accept and approve the resolution for EDA grant application which requests federal grant funding for the city of Perry to build water tower, city well, and extend water into the township in cooperation with Perry Township. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That'll take us to possible approval of 2013 Public Act 270 compliance. Devin, you usually brief council on this. Do you have some information to share with them?
The only additional information that I have is that I was confident that we were. is that I was confident that we were going to be adding on one more employee. So the original figures that I gave you to be compliant with the state level was a little short. And you have a revised one that I gave you tonight. And with that, we are actually in the 6,000 to the good. So what I do for the new council that has not seen this before, our health insurance, every year since 2011, council has graciously opt us out of the rules because we always have met the hard cap. And it's in the budget to take care of our healthcare costs. And so again, this has to be done annually. And so I am presenting it on its annual arrival to council to consider to opt out of the healthcare. Or opt out of the healthcare according to the state mandates.
So the floor is open for questions, discussion, motion, whatever council's priority is.
I move that we accept and approve this resolution, which approves the city of Perry's option to opt out of the requirements of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, also known as Senate Bill 7 of 2011.
Second.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Catrelle, to accept and approve resolution, which approves the city of Perry's option to opt out of the requirements of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, also known as Senate Bill Number 7 of 2011. Is there discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will move us to our final item of new business, which is the Christmas lighting contest. So we've brought before council a possible approval of the annual Christmas lighting contest. Usually we have a council member who volunteers to lead this. And winners from the previous year are invited to participate as judges. Also, you can have more than one council member do this. You can certainly set it up to wear masks in cars. And if you wish, you can each drive separately. It can be done in any way that the council members leading this deem to be safe for everybody who participates. So we'll put it before you and open the floor up for discussion, questions, motions, whatever council's wishes on this.
For the last couple of years, we've all met here in the parking lot. And then we would just, it would be like a snake going off through Perry. And there's some beautiful, beautiful lights. And I've been doing it for the past few years, but this year I'm going to be out of it. And so any council members, and we even had citizens just coming because they know how pretty it is. And then we'd come back and we'd go in downstairs. We probably had come upstairs this year and discuss, you know, hey, I've got, you know, 350 Green Street, which is my house, it looks good. But, and then somebody else has an opinion. We're good together, and we sit there and talk, and we have a winner and then a first or second, third, and fourth place. Three honorable mentions. And it's a lot of fun. And if you get coordinated and you get back, it's a little chilly. You can have some hot chocolate and cookies. You can find somebody to bring hot chocolate and cookies. But it is a lot of fun. So we're going to need at least one council member and a flock of Perridians to go around and check out the lights.
So we don't have to settle who will be leading it tonight. And certainly, the council members-elect and the mayor-elect are certainly welcome if they want to participate in this process. You're all not allowed to win, so it's kind of nice when you can help choose the winners. But for tonight, we're looking for council's approval for the contest.
Also, you'll want to pick a date and time, so that's what is usually council. Pick a date that you're going to go out so the community knows when to turn on their lights and what day to be there.
Right.
So you'll see spaces in your motion to create that.
So for purposes of this discussion, I will recognize the mayor and council members-elect if they want to make any suggestions as to time, time and date. So no action taken?
Well, I'm giving everybody a chance to kind of gather their thoughts and be able to address it.
They might be doing a little different this year. I don't think they'll be riding together, would they? Of course, they might be.
They're not required to. They can certainly ride separate.
Larry, there's a date. That's good for you.
In the past, we've tended to do it fairly early in the month of December because of Christmas fantasy and previously the light parade. Without those events, I recommend maybe we consider not right on top of Christmas.
The middle of?
I was looking like maybe Tuesday the 15th or something like that. Just toss that out as a suggestion.
And then the meeting Tuesday the 17th, you can announce. I think that's an awesome idea.
You got time in mind, Larry?
Pardon?
Do you have a time in mind?
I think we've done around 7:00 o'clock in the past.
Yeah.
That way it's dark enough and you know, between 7:00, usually. I think my wife and I have done it as winners and runners-up in the past.
Right.
It takes about an hour and a half, something like that, to drive through. So we're usually wrapped up by Christmas. 9:00 o'clock, we've visited everything, chatting.
Seen everything. A good hour and a half, I'd say.
Is Dory still with us?
Yeah. Yeah, she's back here.
Dory, what do you think about that? You are usually the one who ends up contacting all the winners. If they do it on the 15th in the evening, will that be sufficient time for you to do the follow-up and reach out to winners?
Well, yeah, because it'd be Tuesday and Wednesday. If I can get in touch with them and try to get them here.
You have Wednesday and Thursday, because it'd be Tuesday in the evening.
Yeah. If we could get them here for the meeting that week, that's kind of short notice for them. But if they can come again, if they can't, then we'll contact them later. Who would they get?
I mean, it's a battle. We could move it back an extra day. Dory, did you do it that Monday before 10? That gives you Tuesday, Wednesday.
Thursday day and get them here Thursday night?
So if you do it Monday night, we're getting into information on Tuesday. Your agenda is already out.
Oh, that's right.
Is there any way that we could, so December 1st lands on a Tuesday. Is there any way in the first week of December that you could look into a date? At the end, like a Thursday evening, maybe? I mean, I know it's a council, maybe the following week. What's, what is the following Thursday? Is that the?
The 10th.
The 10th? Would that be more reasonable? And then that would allow you guys to take your time, get us the results, and then sitting halls can contact the winners.
I think we usually do it like the second Tuesday.
It's usually between Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Yeah, we usually get it in the newspaper and get posted online so people don't turn their lights on at a specific time.
Right.
Can we get access?
The Christmas fantasy or the light parade before that and try to have the winners announce sometimes apples.
Sure.
And we could put that on the LED board, can't we? Something like that?
Yep.
And somebody's there with the school side of it to?
As long as they're answering, I just sent them a lot of information and I didn't get a response. But there is, we just got calls, more things have changed at the school level, so.
Yeah, okay.
I know they have to work. I just don't know if they're consistently enough to get it right away. But this is plenty of time to get that information out.
Good, good.
So 10th then? Is that where we're looking at? The 10th?
The 10th.
Okay.
Which is a Thursday? Is that what we're changing?
That's a Thursday.
I move that the city will again hold its annual Christmas lighting contest to be held on December the 10th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. And have the three top winners with the city contributing $200 to be divided among the winners.
Second.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Catrelle, that the city will again hold its annual Christmas lighting contest to be held on December 10th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. And have three top winners with the city contributing $200 to be divided among the winners. Is there discussion? Thank you, everybody, for your input and thoughts on this. There are no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That'll take us to any other business may come before council. This is the second opportunity during our meeting for members of the public to address council on any matter. Devin, would any of the folks joining us with Zoom like to be recognized for comment?
Hold on.
Sure.
Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to participate?
Raise your hand, please.
Nobody's responding. I just had somebody jump on or books. I thought maybe they were interested.
No problem. Would anybody here present with us tonight like to address council on any matter? Seeing no public comment, I'll ask council if there are any other items of business that need to come before you for your attention tonight. Items requiring council action?
A council question, because I'm not really sure if this is something feasible. I've been, I was talking to a business owner. And he made some really good sense, the amount of time that he's had zero people inside of his establishment. And then it was 50% occupancy. Now it's zero. And it's been like that for a long time. And he was telling me that his water bill is still the same every month. Now, and I understand we all have our water bills. But he said his is roughly $600 a month, and there's zero revenue coming in. That, the liquor license, the property taxes, and everything else. Is there something that the city of Perry can do for the merchants as far as their water bill? I don't know how to, I didn't know how to answer that. And so I just wanted to bring it to council, bring it to the right hand man, Devin, and go from there to see if there's something that the city can do or if we can go through the county. But it's just a shame. It is just a shame what's happening. And it'll be over soon. I really feel that. But I just think that I would like to see if we can look into this.
Okay. For you and I, this is the last meeting, but you've brought.
Well, I was looking over here out of the corner of my eye.
You've brought your attention to the new mayor.
Looking out of the corner of my eye.
Plus, everybody who's staying here. There are several portions of the water bill. There are usage charges, there are ready-to-serve charges that are there to maintain the system so that the water's available when folks need it. I know that the city has to be very careful in how it handles the water bills because we can't make special exceptions for individuals, but we have to treat everybody equally. It's certainly a complicated question. If members have specific questions, I'd recommend a conversation with the new mayor coming in. And John Soller, if you want to give him technical details, I think he'll be willing to help all of you guys understand the intricacies of it.
Now, several years back, I think it was Perry that brought it up, the DDA. Or it was, it was somebody else, the Downtown Development. Would that have been something Perry would, that would have helped the downtown businesses? If the talk of the DDA that we had, we talked about four or five years ago, if it started back then and the money that they create, would that have been something to help with these bills in a situation like this?
The DDA would not be able to spend the money to pay water bills, correct members?
Okay.
Can I address that?
Yes.
I was on the Township DDA for 20 years. And it's set up for exactly what the title says, Downtown Development Authority. So no, I wouldn't be available to pay their water bill or do that type of thing. And I think, and I don't mean to overstep my bounds here, but I think addressing somebody's water bill is going to be a really difficult thing to do because then we've got people who have a water bill at home, and they're not working, and then so what do we do to try to help them? I think we could certainly look, and it's been on my mind, to try to help people as best we can as a city to help our community get through this difficult time. And there are some things set up, certainly, to help residents who are home on financial difficulty. But to help our businesses, I think we need to maybe look at some other things. But rest assured, I will address that concern.
I really, really appreciate it.
But I don't think it's probably going to be in the water department.
Okay. Yeah, it's, you know, because he has nobody coming in.
Right.
And for the foreseeable future, there's no revenues, but his water bill keeps coming and nobody's flushing. And so I didn't know how that would transcribe. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
And I'd like to say thank you for that.
Another thing, if I may. Back when school and everything else was normal, we had a student mayor from Perry would come and spend one month at our meetings. And it's the exceptional students, the ones that are looking for something else to add to their college application. And then we started thinking that, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be Perry. I'd like, we'd like to offer it to the students of Perry first. And if not, we have homeschool kids that would really excel. And Morris and Duran and things like that. I just want that to not go by the wayside because we haven't done it once this year in 2020. And so I just thought that's something that the rest of the council and you could keep in mind and keep that rolling because the student mayor was wonderful.
Chris, the policy's still in place, so now you've brought it to the mayor-elect's attention. And certainly, once this COVID crisis passes, she has the opportunity to reach out to the schools and reinvigorate the program. If you'd like to do that, council created the policy. Devin has it in the policy book downstairs if you'd like to review it. And that's available to you anytime you'd like to look. The new council members-elect would like to familiarize themselves with that. Feel free to talk to the clerk to do that. I think it was a wonderful program.
Yeah.
We're living in a different time now.
Yeah, exactly.
Anything else, Chris?
Well, you remember they'd come in and say, well, you know, I didn't tell anybody at school because I didn't want to take the ribbon. But then they told their friends, and their friends were coming, and it was great. Perry has great schools. They have great people working at the schools. And the city and the school works really well together. And so keep that, keep that bus rolling, is what they say.
I think it is a good program, but I think they stopped just a little short. I attended a couple of meetings when there was a student mayor here. I would like to see student council people at each council people table so that there's more opportunity for interaction.
For more.
So they can see what you're reading, what you're doing, maybe even hear what you're thinking after the meeting's over. So I think it's a good program. I think it maybe needs to be expanded just a little bit, tweaked just a little.
I applaud you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we've kind of transitioned into council discussions and observations. Any other council discussions and observations, Mr. Powell? Councilman Gelbey. Councilman Grass. Mayor Phil Towne-Catrell.
Thank you, everybody. It's been a really nice time, and I've learned a lot. And I'll still be on the planning commission. But thank you all very much for the warm welcome and for being patient with my.
Professionalism.
Living care. Thank you all very much.
And you.
Councilman Wood.
No.
No.
You don't get to say goodbye to me?
No.
I'll have to come over to your house then.
Just some last thoughts. I really appreciate the kind words that were spoken. I'll tell you the truth, I never wanted this job. Ross DeLuau asked me to come back as mayor, when he was mayor, and to help out, and I agreed to serve for him as mayor pro tem. He, at the time, encouraged me to run for mayor in 2014, and I told him no, and I could go home if he needed somebody to do that, and you could put somebody else in the seat, but he said he wanted me to stay and help. And unfortunately, we lost him on Labor Day of 2013, and suddenly I had the job I didn't want. It's been a privilege to serve the city, and I appreciate all the kind words said. It is what elected office should be, and unfortunately, our national leaders failed to show us this. It's about service. It's about making hard decisions and doing the right thing for the people that we serve in the community. Doing the work, doing the research, spending the time, and it's hard to do, even when you reach what you believe to be the right answer. You keep looking at all the information, you keep reconsidering it, you keep listening to the voices around you, and you do your best to get it right. I hope in time that history will judge me as having done an adequate job in taking care of the city. I think we've accomplished some good goals. I've had the privilege to work with a lot of outstanding council members, friends, many of whom I've unfortunately lost. In my time in this office, I'm afraid we've lost three elected officials to cancer. I don't know if that's ever happened in this period of time before, but it was hard to do that, to lose those friends, lose those advisors. I thank you all for your service. For the two, for the new members, I go back to the words from John Adams, "I am fairly out, and you are fairly in. See which of us shall be happy." I wish you guys the best of luck. I hope God blesses you all. Thank you all very much. Do we have any agenda items for next meeting? I think we've completed all of our business. I think the new mayor may have some agenda items that she'll want to bring up, but she'll be able to work directly with the clerk to get those items on the agenda as she prepares for her administration. Do council members have anything else that needs to be added to the agenda for the next meeting? Anything you're aware of at this time, Devin?
No.
All right, so we will leave the items of business without action. There'll be a whole bunch of organizational things. You guys are going to have to approve bank accounts, check signers, there's a whole number of routine organizational motions that you'll have to go through, and the new mayor will select a mayor pro tem. New challenge for your council. That reminds me, that was something else I wanted to say. I've been really grateful for Genevieve coming on this city council. It hasn't been a long term, and when I picked her, I recognized from working and watching her on the planning commission that she was an extraordinarily professional and intelligent woman. And I made a choice at the time to throw her in the deep end as mayor pro tem. I had a sincere hope that she would stay on the council, and if she had, I would recommend her to sue for mayor pro tem. Genevieve, having been thrown in the deep end, you did an outstanding job. I think it speaks to your character and your professionalism, and I'm grateful for it.
Thank you for your mention, Mayor. I appreciate it.
So that concludes the meeting. The time is now 7:53. This meeting is over.